Okay. So, number one, would everybody please join me in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, for roll call, we have all eight members present. Now the attorney is off the council, we'll have a newer council member probably at the next meeting. Okay, public participation, so let me just kind of give you, if I can, just to save time because you never expect to have a forty-five minute meeting, if one, let's say one person gets up, I don't care who it is, just somebody in the audience, if another person could be ready to get up, so after they give their name and address and make their comments, and we, by the way, will not discuss the comments, we never do that at the council, so we're not going to say, "Yeah, great," or "No," or whatever, we just sit here and listen. So, once a person gets up, but the other person could be, the next person could be kind of ready to get up, and then a third person, and we'll listen to all of you if that's what you want. If people are saying the same thing over and over again, then you don't really have to bother, but we're encouraging you, we can be here as late as you like, ten o'clock I fall asleep, but I have a vice chair who may stay up later. So, let's do public participation, any first person would like to participate?
Madam Chair, point of orders, it's all members of council are here with Jason Mallory.
Jason Mallory will be here in a second.
Just for the record?
Yep. Jason's here, he just had to go someplace for five minutes. Okay, so whoever's going to be first?
Would you have to ask the public to give their name?
Yes, you have to give your name, your address, that's part of our procedure, and then when the first person is speaking, the second person could kind of get ready to come up. All right, so who would like to be first? Do I have to pick on somebody? This is ridiculous. Okay, and if I don't recognize you, the lights in here are terrible.
All right.
So, of course, announce who you are, Donna Lane.
Donna Lane, Chairman of the Board of Education and also the member of the Teacher Negotiation Committee for the Board of Education. So, I'm just here to say that part of our negotiation started in April. During our negotiations, which I, myself, David Ferris, who couldn't be here tonight, Jeff Valchino representing the board, and we had Rebecca, oh, Donna, sorry, Rebecca, representing the Board of Finance on it with administration, excuse me. So, just so that you know what the process is, we get lots of financial data from our attorneys on all the different areas such as awards that are in, that have happened within the state of Connecticut. Also, I mean, you can imagine all the data. We get data regarding town health, I mean, the book is probably about this thick of all the information. Just want to say that we feel, and I'll speak for myself, but I do know that I speak for the other two Board of Education members, that this was, the negotiation was conducted fairly. We feel that the award that we negotiated in mediation is a fair award, and that we support the contract, which was unanimously voted by the Board of Education, that we mediated and negotiated with the teachers' union. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. And so while the third person's, you know, kind of getting ready.
Got it really organized. Nina Sue Coniff, Seven Georges Lane. Hello, my name is Sue Coniff, and I'm here tonight to speak about the Monroe Teachers Contract. I'm a resident, a retired seventh grade language arts teacher, and former officer in the Monroe Education Association. I've negotiated approximately nine to ten teacher contracts. As you know, there are many rumors that are heard in a small town. Some of them are true and some are not. Nevertheless, they can be alarming and therefore require a response if in fact they are true. First, I have heard that there are a number of council members prepared to reject the new teacher contract tonight. Then, if that is not successful, the Board of Ed budget proposal will be cut severely, necessitating the firing of five to seven teachers. In case the rumor is true, let me address the issue of the teacher contract. In the early eighties, Monroe's teacher salaries were very low. In fact, they were at the bottom of the county. Ninety teachers left the district in a two-year span. Moving to Newtown, teachers received a $12,000 raise. To Fairfield, gained teachers a $17,000 raise. The list goes on, with some teachers leaving the profession altogether. After that, Monroe became a training town for teachers just out of college. They would teach for a year or two in Monroe, gain experience, and then move on to a town that paid a salary they could live on. It wasn't until the Educational Enhancement Act was passed in 1986 that fairness was restored. The moral of the story is teacher salaries must remain competitive in order to maintain a high-quality staff. That is what this contract will do. What will happen if the contract is rejected tonight? First, it will cost the town approximately $100,000 to go to arbitration. Secondly, the council runs the risk of having to pay even more in any settlement arrived at arbitration. The arbiter's decision is final. How is the town positioned to get a lower salary percentage for their contract? Not very well. The town has an undesignedated fund balance or surplus of approximately $12 million. The town's ability to pay is one of the major considerations in arbitration. Doesn't seem like a smart move for the council to risk having to pay more. Now is the, now to the issue of lowering the teacher's salary costs by reducing the number of teachers in the system. We already have class sizes climbing in both the elementary and middle school, and with the student population growing each year, according to the latest demographic study, what will this do to the quality of education? Having been a teacher for many years, I can tell you that it is much harder to achieve the goals of your grade level with your students when that number in your class becomes unmanageable. The teachers in Monroe are dedicated to their profession and to this town. Last year, they were asked to open their contract a year early and change their health insurance to save the district and town money, even though this change was a rate increase for them. For this generosity, are they to be rewarded with a rejected contract, which was negotiated in good faith? I say no. Council members, do not reject this contract. Support quality education in Monroe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Nicholas Kapoor, K.A.P.O.O.R., 109 Meadows End Road. I am a member of the Board of Education, but I'm speaking only on behalf of myself. I'm going to sound like a cliche to begin, because I think that's how all good oratories begin, but I truly believe that education is the cornerstone of our democracy. And I say that because I think that education allows us, as engaged citizens, to think critically and be part of our society in a productive way. It's extremely important to us all, especially as a society. And teachers, I believe, have the unique opportunity to be transformative figures in their students' lives. I bet I could ask every one of you and everyone in this room about a teacher that impacted your life, and we could be here until the sun comes up, trading stories about how teachers have impacted our lives. I could stand here and tell you about my second grade teacher, my fifth grade teacher, and my high school math teacher, who saw a love of quantitative reasoning and numbers in myself that I didn't even know I had. And she nurtured me and took me under her wing, and I went before and after school of mathematics at a top-tier regional university in New England. Teachers have major impacts on our lives, and they have impacts on our lives at an age where, when we feel those things between, in our younger years, they have an outsized effect on our lives later in life. The work of teachers matters. They are training tomorrow's leaders. Today's students are tomorrow's leaders, and in many instances, actually, today's students are today's leaders. But who is at the forefront of training our students, of molding those minds? It's our teachers. Their work is important. I believe that the teachers deserve your respect and support with this agreement this evening. And I want to just emphasize a few things that our distinguished chairwoman was talking about. This agreement is bipartisan and unanimous, and negotiated in good faith. As Mrs. Coniff just said, you have to think about the money that it would cost in arbitration, and the time, not only the money that the teachers could possibly be awarded and the legal fees, but the overhead costs of the superintendent, of B and B staff, of our attorneys. That's cost that is going to impact our budget and your budget. It's really one town budget, our budget as a town. Also, currently, there are other town hall, union contracts open. Highway, clerical, and supervisors are all open this year. I think that the teachers are the largest union in town. If you vote to reject this contract, what is going to happen to those other contracts? If you're sitting on the other side of the table, from the first electman and the negotiating team, and you're in another union who has a contract open, is it open season? You're doing, you're looking at one of the largest, I think the largest, union in our town. This would have rippling effects for many months and many contracts to come. Look at the credentials of teachers and what they're getting paid. Look at some of the new laws that have come in, that said you have to obtain an advanced degree within a certain amount of years. Look at the salary grid for master's degrees, and take those salaries of teachers and compare them to other jobs where you have to have a master's degree. Look at those numbers, okay? Why are families moving into Monroe? Talk to young families that are moving into this town. They're moving here for the school system. The school, the school system is made up of people. What is our school system? It's our teachers. They're the ones who are in front of our students. Also, look at test scores over the last couple of years. I really don't like to use test scores as, you know, a deciding factor on something, but look at test scores. The Assistant Superintendent has a very impressive book that he's put together. We are number one in our DURG for English and Language Arts at many of our elementary grade levels. That's with elementary school class sizes of twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. And we're doing much better in math, especially at Jockey Hollow over the last couple of years. Look at our AP scores, look at our college placements. Now, the students have to earn those things, but where are they learning from? They're learning from our teachers. We have an uptick in enrollment at the elementary level, projected, about eighty-six to ninety students over the next five years. We're going to need our teachers to be there for the next classes coming up. They need to feel that you support them, as the Board of Education did in voting for this contract unanimously. I understand that it's a bad budget year. I understand that, but we cannot conflate the teacher's contract with the bad budget. This is a three-year contract. We will somehow get through this budget, and we will come out of the other side stronger because we will know the mistakes that we have made, and we will know going forward not to make them again, and we will come out of this, and I understand that. But don't punish the teachers for a bad budget year. I'd ask you to please do the right thing, support and respect our teachers. They have earned it. Please support the contract. Thank you.
Here comes a brave soul.
Hi, Jeff Seymour, Massic High School. I'm an English and Social Studies teacher, president of the MBA. Just want to add two things. The mediation process is not designed to create winners. When we walked out of the mediation, nobody felt like they had won anything. But we faced the reality of what the trends are in the state, what other towns are paying, and we on our side, and I'm sure the board on its side, realized that within the known universe of settlements, what we had agreed to was fair, was fair. The latest data I received today from my CEA rep actually reflects that the actual percentages in this contract are, in fact, below state averages over the last eight months. So, nobody won in mediation. We believe these are really fair numbers, and if we do go to arbitration, I don't see how these numbers would change at all, because the arbitrators have the same numbers as well. And they would probably go right back to what we agreed to and say, "That's a pretty good result." The other thing I want to add is not reflected in the contract, but one of the things that we find in town of Monroe is that teachers get here and they stay, because it's a good place to work. And when they get here and when they work here, they work hard. Every teacher I know goes above and beyond the contract, works longer hours than are stipulated in the contract, which is what we should do as professionals. We add things to our day. I look and I see that I've had the sons and daughters of some of you here. Part of what we do is we do give that extra time necessary to get them ready for AP tests, for SAT tests, for what's going on in their lives. I don't pick up the phone and call Jack and say, "You know, we're doing all this extra work. You need to start cutting those checks for extra work." We don't do it that way. We don't do it that way. One of the things about this district is that we cooperate. I go to meetings with other local presidents, and all I hear about is, "We're grieving this, we're grieving that, we're grieving the other thing." We're so mad at administration. That's not how it happens here. We haven't grieved much of anything in the last eight years. We pick up the phone, we talk to each other, we talk like professionals, and we work it out. And that is why this is a good place to work. That is why people want to work here, they want to come here, they want to build their careers here. And I think that rejecting the contract would be a bit of a blow, because people would question, "Why? What did we do? What did we do to make you think that we weren't deserving of this very fair raise?" Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I don't know if I need this, but Carlos Reynoso Jr., 96 Gaybauer Road. 96 Gaybauer Road. Former Board of Education member as well. I just, I really got to keep it brief, because many have said what I, some of what I was going to say as well. Just to say that, I first want to start by saying thank you. Thank you to Monroe for giving my children, my first two children, my oldest two, the best education they've ever received. One's now at Florida Atlantic University, the other one is at Southern. And I have two others, one is freshman at Massic. Rachel and Noah is at Monroe Elementary School as a third grader. It is because of the school district that we moved to Monroe sixteen years ago. And it's because of our parks, because of the safe neighborhoods, because of everything Monroe has to offer. I'll tell you, I probably, for those who may not know, but I'm one of the biggest promoters of Monroe. I love this town. I've loved this town since I played travel soccer and played for a team in Stratford and then went to Bridgeport, and came to our parks and really admired, as I heard my mother say, "One day we'll move to Monroe." My parents were never able to make that a reality, unfortunately, but fortunately, they gave me a beautiful, great life, wonderful life, myself and my brother. But Monroe stayed in the back of my mind, and I said, "This is where I want to live with my family." At a young age, I knew I wanted to be here, and I wanted to represent the town how best I, whenever I could, and to be able to have my own children, my own family, be able to use, and as a taxpayer, right, more importantly, in support of everything that Monroe has to offer. So, on behalf of the families, on behalf of what the board members have shared and all those in support, just to tell you two words, thank you. And I really hope that we can continue with the education that we have in this town. I get concerned, because I hear of other towns who don't have an education like we have here, don't have the professionals that we have here, and really, sixteen years, I have no regrets on what the education system has done here for my children, for my family, and neighbors, and all of you as well. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Teresa Oleyar, O-L-E-Y-A-R, and I am at 133 Old Castle Drive. I will also be brief, as lots of people have now said some of the same things. Something Nick said, I think it was Nick, that made me think of something, and it's, A, we're not just competing within our own DURG, we're actually competing in DURG, the higher DURG, DURG A, is it DURG A? And, you know, if you compare our students, and I also don't like test scores either, but we're performing within a percent or two of Westport and Fairfield and a lot of, you know, Gold Coast-y towns. We have people moving up from Westchester and Down County coming to our town, and a big push is our education. When you look at the scales for other towns, Trumbull, Fairfield, yes, we might start out, and it's like, "The teachers are getting paid so much when they're coming in." When you go through the scale, we still top off a little lower than some other towns, and to now not have a raise and get later, yeah, I'd be scared for teachers to leave, because we do, people do stay. I feel like our teachers are happy. I would like to think that that is true. Our environment, our school environment is happy. Our school environment is something of collaboration and support of one another, and that's why you'll see our teachers at the farmer's market and at our pancake breakfast, and you'll see them at our carnival and at our parade. They're there on their days off, they're there on the weekends, they're there planting flowers with kids at the school. They're there because they love Monroe just as much as we love Monroe, and that's why so many live in Monroe. They're not just teaching our kids, their kids are here too. They're raising their families here too. I like to think of it, we're raising the Derek Jeters of the teaching world, right? Homegrown Yankee team, for those, it's just sports reference, the Yankees the only team I know. They start off as the rookie, they come here, they say, "This is where I'm going to make myself proud, my family proud, my career proud. I'm going to stay here, I'm going to grow my family here, and I'm going to become the captain. I'm going to become Assistant Superintendent. I love Monroe so much. You'll see me coaching, and you'll see me whatever, and Monroe will be my home, and all the kids will be my home." And, yeah, the budget year is, it's tough, and I respect the position. You're all volunteers. I don't envy any of you. But it has nothing to do with the teacher's contract. It just, it just doesn't, it has nothing to do with it. And so I would hope that with this not-typical, special meeting, as opposed to just a regular item on your regular meeting, that I would hope that it doesn't mean you're already feeling something for rejection, because I think our teachers and our students deserve to keep Monroe at the level that we've been performing at.
Barbara Farr, 233 Meadows End Road. Barbara Farr, 233 Meadows End.
And it's at the HR.
Yes, thank you. We did. So, the reason I wanted to get up and speak tonight is really more not as a vote yes or vote no comment, it's a comment of concern as a citizen that I reached out to many of you actually up there yesterday about, when I heard that this meeting was happening and you had not had the opportunity to review the documents that were going to be discussed at the meeting. That concerns me as a citizen, to make sure that you all, as leaders, have the ability to do the necessary due diligence before being called to ask, or called to vote on something, especially as large and important to our town as our teacher's contract, because it is one of the largest expenses we as taxpayers are paying through our budget. So, I'm speaking because of, I was frustrated, and I spoke up to most of you. I pushed, Donna, thank you, to make sure that the documents at least got out there electronically so we, as the public, could have access to them. And I just want to say to each of you, please, don't just vote tonight because you feel like you're pressured to vote tonight. Make sure you're voting tonight because you understand the implications of the contract and what you're voting on, and because it isn't just all about the teachers. It is a huge component of it, but it isn't all about the teachers. It is all about the residents of this town, putting trust in you as our representatives to make sure you understand what you're doing on our behalf. Thank you.
So, I'm going to take, thank you. I'm going to take a minute, I have a letter that I received, which I've given to the whole council, from Mike Manjos, who is the Board of Finance Chair and has been for at least eight or ten years. "I am writing to you to express my personal opinions as to the teacher's contract. As Chairman of the Board of Finance, I've had the opportunity to review the teacher's contract you are presently considering. I would like to make you aware of some facts about the town's current financial situation and the effect this contract will have on our budget. As proposed, the contract will add $738,109 in year one, $786,347 in year two, and $813,947 in year three, or $2,338,403 over three years to the Board of Ed budget. Presently, our average teacher salary is the eighth highest in the state and third highest in our DURG. The towns that are above us are considerably wealthier than Monroe with considerably low, lower mill rates. We'll also be adding an additional $11,407,000 per year in stipends. The concept of savings in insurance in years two and years three is misleading. The insurance costs will increase year for year. This might lower the overall increase, but this year we're assuming a 10% increase in insurance, and this will only lower the increase by a small percentage. With dramatic increases in medical costs already in the budget, adding these additional payroll costs will result in a budget increase that taxpayers will not accept at referendum. In my opinion, the POEs, only option will be to cut staff. Since the Board of Ed budget is the majority of the total budget, and staff the majority of their costs, this is inevitable. We will end up with fewer higher-paid teachers with larger class sizes. I have heard people claim that it's out of our hands and that other towns are also giving these increases. I would counter that Monroe already pays our teachers very well, and since we are starting at a higher base, a lower percentage increase would still be very fair to our teachers. Are we not better off having more teachers making 1% less in smaller classes than firing our youngest teachers so the remaining numbers can earn 1% more? We cannot expect the taxpayer to support significant mill rate increases, and historically, we have only been able to pass budgets at a 2.5% increase or less. I would suggest you ask the Board of Education to provide a detailed list of what it will take to get down to this level and how many staff they are prepared to eliminate. I strongly recommend voting against this contract and believe taking the risk of arbitration is our best option. Sincerely, Michael A. Manjos." Thank you. So, the next person, please, I just wanted to make sure that was read in. Next person wishing to speak? Okay, I'll read it again. No, sorry. Next. We threw a public participation? No one's getting up, because then I'll close the public participation. Okay, and Mrs. Oleyar, I have a comment for you to make the next time. Yesterday was Babe Ruth's hundred year, signing up as a Yankee, and I'm from the Bronx. Okay, so I'm closing public participation. We're going on, so I want to ask Mr. Lou, our town attorney, to show us what else has to be done.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to remind the council, and for those of you that have been through this process before, and just want to outline the process relative to the agreement before you this evening, or that we're discussing this evening. There's only one, it's a special meeting, so there's only one item of business before you this evening, that is this teacher's agreement. The agreement is governed by, well, the mechanism for the interaction between the town of Monroe, town side, and the Board of Ed side is governed by Connecticut General Statute 10-153D sub B. And essentially, what that says, that statute says is that the agreement shall be binding upon the legislative authority, which is you, the town council, unless it's rejected by the town council, within thirty days of its filing. It was filed, as you know, on December 17th of last year with the town clerk. So, that means that if no rejection action is taken on it before the 16th of next, of this month, which is after your next meeting, then the agreement will have been deemed accepted by you. So, therefore, while there is a matter on the agenda this evening, and you do have a prepared resolution, should someone want to present that, you're not compelled to introduce a motion or a resolution or anything of that nature. In fact, all the years I was on council, I can't recall there ever having been a formal motion having been made. We did discuss it at times. I know that I was party to a very productive non-meeting before this meeting this evening, where there was very good discussion there. So, again, there's no one who's compelled to make a motion. I wanted the public to understand that, or those that are here to understand how this mechanism works, so that the council is not sitting up there stoic and everybody wondering what's going on and why the resolution is not being introduced. So, like I said in the past, this council has taken no action on all the agreements that were before me that I can recall, although there was some discussion. But I do think this was a very healthy presentation, a non-meeting, so I'll leave it to you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to re-
I just wanted to remind you of that, of that structure, and if discussion needs to be had beforehand, you can do so without introduction of the resolution formally, and we can move this meeting forward to any questions. I'll be sitting right below you.
So do I have the right, Mr. Ludo, do I have the right to ask Mr. Kellogg to, we're going to postpone, with everyone doing consensus, which we discussed before, we're going to postpone the actual voting on the contract or what we're going to do with it, blah, 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 until next Monday, January 13th? If you can put that on the calendar for us?
Yeah, certainly, if you don't take any action on the resolution, you can certainly include it in old business in your subsequent meeting, regular meeting on Monday.
Okay.
I mean, parliamentally, there's a number of actions that you can take, but again, you have one item on the agenda for new business. If it can be discussed or if there can be no motion or resolution moved, if that's the case, there's no other business to discuss, there would simply be an adjournment, and it can or cannot be included on the next agenda. It's your prerogative, it's the council's prerogative, it's certainly not Mr. Kellogg's prerogative. It would be your prerogative. If it is included on the agenda, again, I would repeat what I just said to you, is again, you're not, you're not compelled to make a motion by way of resolution. If you do nothing, it's going to be accepted. Really, all you have to do is reject it, as you want. That's the only business before you. So you don't have to, you don't have to do it.
Okay, so I think it's going to go on the agenda for the next meeting, correct? Because we all, we discussed this. We didn't discuss the contract, per se, because some people didn't have it, whatever, whatever, and I can understand that. So I think we're just going to put this on as old business next week. We have bonding first at 7:00. There's over $3 million bonds, which have been, I think, in Monroe Sun and some of the other papers. So, but after that, probably at 8:00 at our meeting, this will be the first old business.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
First and foremost, thank you very, I agree with that we did just receive not only the contracts yesterday, but also a lot of information from our public here. So I first and foremost want to thank people for coming out and giving us your feedback. We're here to represent you, and it's often great to hear that we elected these officials, we trust them to do what's right, and that's great. But when there's big issues, it's also wonderful to know what the true public input is. So just thank you all for coming out and speaking. I agree that with the information coming in, with having just received the information, holding a vote tonight, if we are even going to hold a vote, would be out of order. That being said, I will say, I'm a product of the Monroe education, and I don't think I'm sitting up here if I'm not.
Now wait, I can top all that.
That's true. That's very, very true.
I put 42 years into the teacher, my three kids, one West Point, one Georgetown, one UConn, all by teachers. So we're not going to let Jason do that, because I think nothing that he says that I cannot top.
I don't doubt it.
Teacher of the year, citizen of the year. So I think we're just going to adjourn this meeting. I'm adjourning. Do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair, I would like to at least finish my comment.
Point of order, Madam Chair. We received legal advice that comments should be minimal on the days before we contemplate if we're going to do anything with this contract.
And I believe I am making a minimal comment.
Five words.
So as I was saying, I don't think I'm sitting up here if that's not the case. That being said, I do represent every single citizen of this town, and that is what I have to do. I plan on taking all of the information, the numbers, as I feel all of the members here will do, and making an educated decision based off of that. But I do want to, again, thank you, the public, for coming out and telling us what your opinions are, because really, that's what matters. Thank you.
So we do, we should have consensus, just so you have a feeling of what's going on. Ms. Agro, do you have anything to say, that you'd like to say?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, so Mrs. Martin?
I think it's prudent to wait, we have a lot to digest.
Okay, Mr. Aruk?
I concur with the delay.
And certainly, I concur. After doing this for 20 years, Jason, not just two. Mr. Reed?
I can't top those gears, so.
You can't top those gears either. Mr. Rooney?
After the information we received in the non-meeting, I agree, I think we should delay our decisions at this time.
Mr. Foremacaliff?
I agree with the rest of the council.
So we have a consensus of eight people. So do you have a motion to adjourn?
With that, I'll move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much for coming.